To call to order the February 22nd, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Got a big group tonight. I think it's just the hall. I don't think they can hear me out there anyway. You want me to talk louder? Bang my gavel even? I think we're, I think we're good. Okay. So the first item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda.
Move we approve the agenda?
Thank you Shannon.
Second.
Thank you Marcel. So we, any discussion? Okay, we have an agenda. And I did want to say, Chris emailed me ahead of time. She is unable to make it to the meeting tonight due to a work conflict. So this is our board tonight. First item on the agenda is special recognition. And for that, we'll invite Colby Wilson. There you are.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to actually approve it. We had a first and second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
We have a first and second.
I'm sorry. Can we vote to approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Colby, thank you. I'm sorry.
No worries.
So the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year.
Thank you Vanessa.
Yeah.
Thank you to the board and to all the staff and employees at USD 497. Before I introduce our Youth of the Year, I want to say thank you to this group. It's our partnership that helped make things like this happen. And, and help kids like Jasmine create a bright future. So thank you for all your partnership and the work you do. We're really excited about the next phase of our partnership. The new teen center next to the College and Career Center. And we really believe that that project will result in a lot more young people having the same experience that Jasmine did. So, thank you for that. Youth of the Year is our flagship program at the Boys and Girls Club. All candidates are club members who have overcome exceptional odds to succeed in academics, extracurricular activities. And have contributed to their community. Sorry, I didn't, didn't know I had to turn that on. I'm excited to introduce this year's Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence Youth of the Year, Lawrence High School Junior Jasmine McNair.
Hello everyone. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I want to start by saying that it really is an honor to receive recognition from Boys and Girls Club considering the personal experience that I have with the club. It's kind of where I met my first few friends and I was put in an adult-like situation as a kid. So it was the only place that I felt like I could express myself. There's nothing unique about growing up in a single parent home. Plenty of kids do it and they succeed with flying colors. But, the thing that separated me from the stereotypical child was that my mom was also a teacher. And as many of you know, teachers spend a lot of time away from home. So I got a lot less time to spend with my mom. But, she was very hardworking and she was the one who shaped me to be the kind of person that I am today. She would be working in her classroom and I was trying to be a good role model for my brothers and sister at home or spending my time at Boys and Girls Club. There came a point where I was so focused on being a good role model that it started to feel like I didn't have one around. But, going to Boys and Girls Club was this new place of free expression and I didn't feel as much pressure anymore. The staff at Boys and Girls Club enjoyed playing and talking with us. And most importantly, they reminded me that what kids have to say is important. And that kids need to be reminded that they have a place to be successful in this world. I'm a person that believes that education is the first step in the direction of success. And school needs to be a place where every student feels like they're being supported. Each student has a different set of needs than the next one and each teacher teaches in a different way. History shows that education has a habit of being one size fits all, but now we know that that's not as true. Technology can give kids more control over their education. We can utilize technology inside and outside of the classroom. And it gives the classroom more of a self-directed type of feeling. It gives kids a voice through social media and it motivates us to speak up about the problems facing our communities. The character of American youth is based on the adults and role models that they have to look up to. Whether that's a teacher or a staff member at Boys and Girls Club or a hard-working parent. A good role model can completely change the way that a child sees the world. Now if I somehow manage to crawl my way through college and become a teacher, I want to be the kind of person that my students can look up to. As a proactive servant of my community. Writing about my Boys and Girls Club experience reminded me to be the kind of person that kids can look up to and receive help from. And while we may not be able to control the situations that a child is facing throughout their day, we can give them tools to ensure a great future. Whether the activity we were doing at Boys and Girls Club was educational or just for, educational or just for fun, there were being the examples of how we need to treat other people when we grew up. If there's one thing that I've learned throughout the Youth of the Year process, it's that I need to keep pushing to make sure that my voice is being heard. And motivate other students to give back to their community and speak up. If more people can step up and show the world what we're truly capable of, then we can accomplish great things. Thank you.
I just wanted to finish up saying that next Tuesday, March 1st, Jasmine's going to be competing at the Boys and Girls Club State Youth of the Year Competition. And we're really excited about that and think she has a really good chance. Thank you all for having us here. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Best of luck at the state competition. We appreciate hearing from you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Future City Teams. And we've had, we have three that we need to honor this evening. First.
We're Central?
Yeah. If you want to come to the mic because we might have people watching at home. Oh, great. Awesome. Thank you. So first up is Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. And I know quite a few of these kids.
Hi, my name is Cole and I was part of Fiotandi, one of the three Future City Teams for LMCMS. Besides Fiotandi, there was Buleit, the eighth grade team. Oh yeah, and Palteora, the other seventh grade team. Oh yeah, and six, there were also six graders in the two seventh grade teams. Yeah, so we went up to KU and we presented our three models and all of our skits. And that was a lot of fun. Buleit won the Student Choice Award, which means a lot of the students chose them to win that award. Like, they voted for them on the sheet. Fiotandi, we won the KU Choice Award. Yeah.
The KU Engineering.
Yeah, the KU Engineering Award, which means that the engineers that were walking around from KU liked our model and answers the best. And Palteora made top five, which means that they can't win any of these special awards, but they have a chance at going for first place and moving on to state. They were so close and we are super proud of them. They made second.
This is Future City's third year at Liberty Memorial Central. And all three of our teams placed in the top five numerically. So we're really proud of them. They are competing at a very high level and we're really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Danny Lotton Barker, the gifted teacher from Southwest. Or maybe the Southwest Team. I'm not sure who's gonna speak to us. Is, oh sure. They're coming.
Hi guys, I'm Danny Lotton Barker and I am a proud mom of one of the Liberty Memorial Central Middle School Team members for Palteora. And I'm also the proud coach of three teams who competed on behalf of Southwest Middle School. So I'm gonna have, each of my teams elected principals in charge when they were competing this, completing this project. And so I'm gonna have the principals in charge announce their team members and announce how they did at the competition. We'll start with you, Av.
So our city's name was Samudra Sebari, which is based in Fiji. It's actually the capital city, Suva, after it was destroyed by sea level rise. And I was the principal in charge and our main innovation members were Sarah Church and Krishi Saberwal. Our citywide innovation members were Juhe O, Nate Pilakowski, and Gwen Elo. Our physical model members were Billy Moon, Ryan Roberts, and Christopher Stone. And our SimCity team members were Ryan Duan, Spencer Ware, and Tassin Jamo. At the Great Plains Regional Competition, we received the special award for the best physical model by the American Public Works Association, the Kansas chapter. It was a great first experience and it's a great thing that we do here.
Okay, I'm Abdullah and my team was named Store for Undering. It was based in Sweden and what used to be Stockholm. Our main innovation team was Isabel Looney and Stephen Juan. Our citywide innovation was Ding Ding Yi, Alec Wilson, and Asa Morrison. Our physical model was Joe Lucian and Benji Strach. Our SimCity was Emma Nelson, Ian Snyder, and Baker Anderson. At the Great Plains Regional Competition, we received a special award from the Kansas State University College of Engineering.
My name is Patrick Keating. I was the PIC for the eighth grade team at Southwest Talika Mahara. We had eighteen members of our team. Rayam Walton, Jack Benkelman, Elliot Wizenhant, Savani Badra Venkata, Ian Haas, Balan Williams, Kirk Gary Weiss, Keaton Hoy, John Loose, Peyton Mallory, Chloe Fraser, Avery Harrington, Spencer Hughes, Eli Looney, Aaron Guo, Charlie Johnson, and Boen Boyack. We won the first place at the Great Plains Regional Competition when, after that, we traveled to Washington DC to compete at the national level against thirty-seven other regional champions from February 12th to the 17th. At Nationals, we represented the region and our district very well. And we were awarded with the special award for best use of renewable energy presented by the American Society of Agricultural and Biological Engineers.
Okay, and last but not least, we have Charlotte Jerome, the gifted education teacher at West, to talk about the West Students Project.
Hello, my name is J.K.
Hi, my name's Matthew Brandonberger from West Middle School. I was a part of the eighth grade Future Cities Team along with Greta Hayden and Margaret McPherson. And I'm gonna have Margaret explain because I don't.
Alright, so for our Future City solution, what we did was, you know, we would recycle everything down to the very last bit, which was, I'd say about eighty-five percent of what normal people would call waste. So with this fifteen percent that couldn't be recycled down any further, we would then use a high-powered plasma to turn that waste into carbon, or hydrogen, which we would then use in our power plant. So, it was kind of, it went full circle, which we thought was a very effective solution in the end.
Hi, I'm Logan Gamarta and I'm part of the seventh grade team at West. The other members of my team are Ashton Weeks, Maria Atchinson, Netni W, and Blaine Luna. And the two who could not come today are Drew Leibold and Sam Sharp. Our city was Bhavishi Utopia and we made a solution by taking the trash off the planet. So, we collected all of the trash through, from the houses through a system of pipes and took it to a space elevator. If you don't know what that is, Canada's making one. Look it up. It's awesome. And we took it up into the elevator, anything that's not able to be recycled and reused. And we shot it to geostationary satellite where it was incinerated and then we harvested the power and used that in our city. Oh, yeah, we also won an award, which was the Creative Materials Award, which we used bendy straws and Q-tips in special ways in our cities to make it colorful and just a bright place for everyone to live.
So we'd like to shake your hands if you want to start over there. I remember one year they actually brought the models in so we could see them. They're really cool. This is a very interesting program with very colorful and interesting things to look at. So thank you so much and I appreciate all the competing that our district is doing in that club. Okay, next agenda item is our consent agenda. Those are items that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent would request that an item be removed. And then those items would be voted on separately. I do believe we have a retirement to recognize as well this evening, so I'll let you start Marcel.
Sure, we'd like to recognize Linda Stanwicks for. Sorry, we'd like to recognize Linda Stanwicks for thirty years of service and devotion to this community and its schools. And with that, I will move that the, sorry.
Consent agenda is approved.
Yeah, sorry. I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you Marcel and Jessica. Any discussion? Okay, Janice.
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. Ethan?
Yes.
The motion passes six feet away. Perfect. We'll move on then to the report of the President of the Board of Education. And I don't have a report this evening, so I will turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools.
Thanks Vanessa. I have a couple for you. Elementary schools are hosting parent-teacher conferences this week. Due to evening conferences, no school Thursday or Friday for our K-5 elementary students. Congratulations to Schwagerl Elementary School Special Education Teacher Frances Caddell and Free State History Teacher Jordan Boyd for their state recognition on Kansas, in Topeka with the Kansas Horizon Awards. I went over for the banquet. Very, we have a secondary and elementary nominee. Very, very, it's very rare to have both of them advance to the state recognition level. So it was really fun to see and to interact with our young teachers in that regard. Free State High School Swimming and Diving Team finished third at state. Junior Jordan Portella earned his third straight Athlete of the Meat title, winning the 200, breaking the state record in the 100 Butterfly and participating in the state champion 200 Medley. Jordan is an eight-time state champion in his three years at Free State. Congratulations also to both high school wrestling teams, qualifying sixteen wrestlers for the upcoming state tournament. Alan Clovier, the Sunflower League, was named Sunflower League Wrestler of the Year. Lawrence Schools Foundation will host a thirtieth anniversary open house, which is pretty cool. I didn't know that they were around that long. Event that will happen from 4:30 to 6:30, March 8th, at the Lawrence College and Career Center. Tours, refreshment, teachers and students showcasing a variety of projects funded by the foundation innovative teaching grants. So March 8th, 4:30 to 6:30. Educate Lawrence will host an education rally 12:30 on Saturday, March 12th, South Park. This is to welcome the Game On for Kansas School Walkers as they come through the state. My understanding is they're coming into Topeka from several directions this year. This is, this is one that I know that some board members have helped organize and for sure Educate Lawrence has helped organize as well. And then the last one I have is, any objection from board members about at least contemplating the change of the March meeting from the 28th to the 21st? Is that a conflict for anybody? So kind of depending upon some of the report tonight and decisions that we may need to make around technology, we may be asking you to move that meeting and we'll let you know soon. Thank you.
And I actually did forget. I did have something I wanted to say, so I'll do my report now. Last week I was able to attend a presentation that Educate Lawrence put together from a spokesperson from the Center for Economic Growth. And then also someone from Game On for Kansas Schools came and spoke to our community. And the turnout was really great. It was nice to see other board members there. The messages were not particularly uplifting, but it is good to see that our community is engaged and interested in what is going on as far as tax policy and education policy at the legislative level. So thank you very much for, Educate Lawrence for organizing that and it was good to be able to attend. And with that, board commentary? Yeah, Shannon?
Trying to make this shorter than I did two weeks ago. But I did want to update everybody on three bills that have, I think I've shared emails with Janice to share with board members about. That last week, the House Education Committee passed out several bills. One of them was an opt-in option on sex education curriculum. So right now, we ask families to opt-out if they don't want their children to receive it. The bill being considered would require everyone to affirmatively opt-in. That hasn't run the House floor yet, as far as I've seen, so there's no status update. But if you're interested in that issue, please contact your legislators. The second one is an Ethnic Studies Bill that was passed out of committee. That one was supposed to create a seven through twelve Ethnic Studies Program that would be what you would expect an Ethnic Studies Program to look like. It was amended into an almost unrecognizable state by the committee. Would have banned discussion or use of materials that talk about social justice as part of that curriculum. And then would have required that we would only be able to talk about certain ethnicities as part of an Ethnic Study Program. So, that's what came out of the committee. It actually ran the House floor today and was defeated. So, that was a good sign. It looked like it was going to pass and over forty representatives changed their yes votes to no votes during the course of the voting. This kind of, whoa, something positive that happened today. And then the third item is the Anti-Common Core Bill that came out of committee. And I know everybody received information about this. It's a little bit confusing as to what happened. So I wanted to share with our school community a little bit about that. Last year, the House Education Committee heard an Anti-Common Core Bill that was House Bill 2292. It didn't go anywhere. It, this year, last, I believe it was last Wednesday, they, the committee noticed a hearing. The item on the committee notice said they were having a presentation from a professor from Wisconsin on the history of education. That was the committee notice. They have the, they have the presentation, which actually was somebody who's known nationally in Tea Party circles as being a very vocal anti-common core advocate. I guess he gave about an hour-long presentation. And at the end of the presentation, the committee, a member of the committee moved to bring up this year's Anti-Common Core Bill by using last year's bill as, in doing what they call a gut and go. So that last year's bill passed out of the committee but didn't go anywhere, so it's still kind of active. So they took that, that shell, that bill shell, and they took the entire contents of the bill for this year, put it into last year's shell and then passed it out of committee with no hearing. The bills are not identical, so the contents of the bill that was passed out of committee never got a hearing. No opportunity, and in fact, I, I heard, now, I didn't verify this, but I heard that people did request to be on the agenda to talk about this history of education stuff, thinking that maybe this was important. And we're told, no, we're only gonna have the one presenter. So, you know, I personally don't believe that that's an appropriate way for that committee to handle a bill that drastically impacts every, everything that we do in our school district. The language of this bill that they passed out is so broad that it would essentially ban every learning standard that we are using in pretty much all of our curricular materials. It hasn't run the House floor yet. I highly encourage you to contact not only our representatives, but anybody else. If you want to email the whole House, that's probably a good, a good idea. And I hope that people in our community will do the same thing. This is not a good bill in any way, shape, or form. I know there's been some press about it where they're saying, oh no, it doesn't affect IB programs or AP programs or whatever. I read this, I read the bill and based on what I know about how AP exams and coursework works in terms of the learning standards and the exams that students take, I believe that the language of the bill does in fact, if it were passed, would prohibit us from using AP materials in our high schools. I think that it's, absolutely does that. And so, I actually did contact one of the representatives who's been quoted in the press about, about, you know, this doesn't ban those programs. And I asked him to please explain to me why he thinks it doesn't ban those programs. And his answer was, because I say so, basically. He said, it just doesn't. And he couldn't provide any rationale or reason or point to any language in the bill that makes him think that that is not what it does, which makes me very, very suspicious that that is in fact actually what it does. And either that's the purpose or, I don't know. It was very, very frustrating interaction. But, anyway, that's, that's the latest from what I've been following and I just wanted to share that with, with board members.
Thank you Shannon. I appreciate the update and your engagement with that. Thank you Shannon, I appreciate the update and your engagement with that. Any other board commentary? Okay. Then we will move on then to our first report tonight, which is an update on our district's expansion of the blended learning. And for that, we'll invite Angelique Nedved and Tara McEwen, and it looks like several others up.
Good evening. Angelique Nedved, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Just want to share a few numbers with you before we launch into our report. 2012, in the fall, we started the conversation about personalized learning in blended environments in teaching and learning. Eight classrooms were how we rolled it out, and they were field testing. What did this really look like in our classroom? Could it work kindergarten through 12th grade, and did it apply across multiple content areas? 300, the number today, of classrooms that are involved with the initiative that teachers have come on voluntarily. Three compelling stories tonight that we want to share with you through the eyes of our teachers. As you can see, board goal listed here for our expectations for curriculum and instruction, and then continuing to evaluate and expand our personalized learning through blended environments. As teaching and learning, we have developed and created with some consulting and meaningful conversations with organizations from around the country that have been studying this type of instructional strategy to create our definition for Lawrence Public Schools, personalized learning via blended environment. I won't read that to you, but you have access to that. Not copying it out of a book, not copying it from another organization, but truly personalizing our own definition with the work through our teachers.
Angelique and I could probably stand up here and tell you hours of stories about blended learning and how it works, but it's much more effective if we have the teachers who are actually doing it every day. So, I'd like to introduce Chris Johnson from Lawrence High School, Kel Catterton from Lawrence Memorial Central Middle School, and Samantha Salz from New York Elementary to tell you something about their classrooms.
Good evening. My name is Chris Johnson, and I teach U.S. History at Lawrence High School. I teach U.S. Government at Lawrence High School and World Geography. All three of those preps I blend. This will be my second full year blending. Now, I'm going to kind of go through and tell you a little bit about why I decided to blend, what blending looks like in the high school environment, and kind of paint the picture through a few stories about my students. But to start off, I'd really like to thank you for the opportunity, the resources, and the support you've given me and my colleagues in this blended learning initiative. It really is a really neat and awesome thing that we're doing here in the district, and I really think that we're pushing forward and really on the right path. First, I'd like to talk about why I decided. I teach at Lawrence High School, and they have career and tech classes, and I would walk around the hallways and I'd go through their class, and I'd kind of look into those classes, and I'd go, "You know what? I can do that in a social studies classroom, and that's what I'd like to do." Another reason is, is that that really inspired me, and then one of my students that I've had, and one of the quotes that I put up there says, "Learning with technology fits our generation." And that really rang home to me, and it wasn't not from technology, it's with technology, and that's one of the things that I really kind of focus in on with blended learning. And then, I believe that we're kind of moving into a direction from more learning dates to more learning concepts and big ideas, and the way we can learn those things is a lot of different variety of ways. Secondly, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what it looks like in my classroom, and probably one of the biggest challenges I run into is people tell me, "What do students do? They just sit at computers and play games?" And that's exactly what it's not. You know, basically, my class is set up on a bunch of objectives, a lot of goals, a lot of big ideas. And what it is, is my class starts the same, we end the same, but in the middle, there's a lot of different areas where the kids learn, and then they can demonstrate through their knowledge through a variety of platforms and through a variety of assessments. One of the areas that I really kind of hone in on is, "How did you learn that, and how can you demonstrate that to me?" And my kids have really gotten into that, and they give me a variety of different assessments through short stories, to student-created videos, to series of journal entries or diaries, through museum-type displays, through storybooks. And kind of a short story is, I had a student come up to me first semester when we were teaching, I was teaching Westward Expansion in U.S. History, and she said, "Wait, Mr. Johnson, I don't have to take a multiple-choice essay test? I can create a visual for you?" And I go, "Yeah, what would you like to create?" And she says, "I want to create a graphic novel." And I go, "Go right ahead, because that'll show me that you learned through a different type of assessment tool that blending learning kind of allows them to do." You know, it also, kind of to wrap up, it allows them to really dive into different resources, learn a lot of different multiple perspectives, and it also allows students to kind of determine through research what is a good resource and a bad resource, and it allows me to guide them through that when they're learning all the different concepts and things. Lastly, you know, one last story is, I'm also an author of a Course Master, which I'm very proud of for U.S. History, and that's allowed my coworkers to work through blended learning and to kind of have a map to kind of go from, and I'm very proud of that. And then, lastly, one of my students and a few of my students kind of ring home to me, and they've always said to me as they leave sometimes, is, "I've never really liked history before, and your classroom has made it something that I really liked and enjoyed." So, again, thank you very much for the opportunity, and hopefully going forward is where it's one of our goal is. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, hello. My name is Kel Catterton. I was up here with Future City. I'm a co-sponsor for Future City for LM-CMS. I'm also the 8th grade ELA and Social Studies teacher, and I've been teaching for 13 years in various capacities and with many certifications. And I did want to also thank you guys for the opportunity of not only being able, and the honor of being able to teach children at their level and with the technology that they need, but also just to be able to be a Course Master writer. I was able to write the Course Master for our English Language Arts for 6th grade, and I've basically been blending two-ish years. Why do I do it? The big part for me, the big piece, is equity. It ties in so beautifully. There's no way that I can teach culturally relevant curriculum in Social Studies and English and educate our children about people outside of themselves without having access to technology. There is no way that they can understand what is happening in this world if they are stuck with a book that was written with pieces from, you know, years ago. And even our curriculum today, we only have, in our 8th grade textbook, I was just working on it, we only have 20 pieces of text that are at the level that challenges every child. And so, it's a big piece of it, and it guarantees success for all students. I wanted to start with some of my stories. I have a student named Casey, and he spent, he came to us to Liberty Memorial from Minnesota, from Minneapolis. He spent most of his time in out-of-school suspension. More of his class time was spent out of school than in school. And when we came and had him, he was placed into a traditional classroom. He tested at a 218 at the very beginning, which was average last year. I did not have him, and he dropped about three grade levels because he didn't buy in, and he felt like the system hadn't bought into him. He started out this year at the same level, about 218, and just across three months, he has increased three and a half grade levels. This is Leila. You'll see Leila right there. Leila is a student who came to me last year. She started out at like a 197, which is very low, and she increased over the course of last year, six and a half grade levels. She improved her writing over four grade levels. We aren't just doing online work, we're doing the work of getting kids. Look at her, she's using pencil and paper. I mean, we've got kids that are able to choose space and choose people that they're working with. Leila has housing insecurity. She's not guaranteed to know where she's staying every night, but she knows that when she comes to school, she has access to everything that everybody else does, and that's fair. You know, she's an amazing, amazing girl, and she's a leader in her Conversation Peace group. She came to us almost silent, and now she's able to speak out and articulate because of the debates and the discussions we use, and because of who she is. Finally, I wanted to tell you about Brendan, who is a SPED student that I received. He was explained to me at the beginning as almost unteachable, that he could not handwrite, so he could not really learn. And I begged and pleaded, and my principal let me keep him inside my class. And Brendan went from a 196 up 36 points to a 132, or from a 194 to a 132. He increased, that's astronomical. That's like from a 3rd grade level to a 10th grade level. And that was in his reading. In writing, he went from a 2nd grade level to a 9th grade level, just by being given a computer that allowed him to be able to type what he wanted to think. This is Casey, and he's amazing. So, 2/3 of my kids have no access to internet without their cellphones at home. Kids that are involved in my class and in Avid average an increase of four grade levels in their reading tests over the course of three months. ESL kids average an increase of four grade levels. SPED kids average an increase of three and a half grade levels. My gifted kids, they're so hard to get up, they average an increase of four grade levels, and our students of color average an increase of three and a half grade levels. It's the connection between relationship within the classroom, the technology they have, and the community that leads to success. We need to keep blended.
Projects that we do in Ms. Catterton's class are really, really fun, and it's a good balance of using pencils and paper and merging it with technology, and the use of technology really helps make it more creative and visually explain it to children.
That is a student who's going to go on to Avid in high school. He didn't go into it in 8th grade because he didn't think he could. He is a first-generation college kid.
Hello. Three.
We love blended learning!
They're cute, I know. They win. Nothing I say is as good as that. I'm Samantha Salz. I teach 1st grade at New York Elementary. I've been teaching for six years, and this is my third year blending. So, as my husband I'm sure could tell you, it was really hard to decide what to share with you tonight because there are so many things that I could say and so many stories that I could share. I decided to pick two kids from this year to talk about and tell you about their different experiences through blended learning. The first student I want to talk about is Ivan. He's a student who in kindergarten was, you know, a perfect student. He listened, he could sit on the carpet nicely and do everything he was supposed to, but his academic gains were stagnant. He didn't make a lot of progress. He could hardly read. And when he came into 1st grade, we started talking about blended and getting into it, moving into, you know, how he's going to choose how he learns, and that he can work with me or with his friends, or he can get on a computer, and he was really terrified of that technology piece. He was almost crying sometimes, just the idea of getting on technology. So, I let him pick me all the time, and he was, you know, making progress, and slowly he started to take those risks. And they're six, so it's a big part of what I do, is teaching them to advocate for themselves and teaching them to figure out what it is they need and how to ask for it. And so, with Ivan, that's really what we worked on. And now, he is choosing his own path. He's on technology some of the time, not all of the time, because he doesn't have to be. But he's able to really direct his own learning and choose within the framework where he needs to go. He's made a lot of growth, everyone in my class has. At winter map testing, more than half my kids were at their end-of-the-year benchmark already, so that says a lot about what that empowerment for my students can do, even at the age of six. Another student I want to talk to you about is Oscar, and Oscar is quoted up here, "The school isn't boring." He's really cute. In kindergarten, he had a lot of trouble, and he, those sitting and listening to the teacher and kind of come-and-get learning was really, really difficult for him. He was off task and was in trouble. When he got into 1st grade, he was super excited. I had his brother, so, you know, I was awesome already. And he started getting into all the different ways that he could choose his own path, and he has grown 33 points on his map score, which is a crazy number for a 6-year-old. And he has really taken that time to choose what he needs. When we finished our winter map, he came to me afterwards and he said, "Ms. Salz, on the test, they asked me some questions about money. I don't know anything about money. Can I learn that?" And I said, "Yeah, let me show you." So, you know, I set up his path to reflect what he asks for and what he needs, and every kid in my class feels that kind of empowerment. And sometimes, you know, there are kids that I'm going to walk with them the whole way through 1st grade, and that's okay, but slowly they're starting to understand what it means to make that choice for themselves and push themselves. So, again, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to do that, allowing me to be able to put that into my classroom and in the hands of all the kids that I teach. This is Emma. She's really cute. You'll like her too.
Ten marks. I'm finding myself really liking Khan Academy.
She really likes Khan Academy.
And so, what's next? We talked about having applications this year for blended learning, and so I wanted to just share this with you all. And kudos to my TOSA team for creating that, and Greg Bonzignori especially for editing it. So, thank you very much. Any questions that you all have?
How many applications do you anticipate we'll be able to accept this year?
On average, we accept about 65 to 75 due to our limited resources, and each year we've received over 100.
Okay. When's the deadline for this year?
March 9.
March 9.
Marcelle?
So, once we get through, assuming it's another 65 or 70, then what percentage would we be at then roughly?
Over 50%.
Yeah, we'd probably be, yeah, right at that 50% plus level.
About 400, and we have about 725 classrooms.
Are we going to get to a, I mean, at what point do you see the, you know, we've gotten through the early adopters now, and probably starting to see a little bit more resistance at some point. What's the game plan, I guess, for, as we get towards that, the last 25% trying to-
What an interesting discussion. I think it compels us to continue having meaningful conversations and looking at the differentiated types of supports that we've provided. Each year, we continue to take a look at the collaborations and the professional development, and it has continued enhancements. and it has continued enhancements. So, I think as we have our conversations with building principals, you know, what is the conversation in your building and why are people maybe not jumping on board yet? So, what are those needs? We just had a conversation last week with our high school principals about, you know, what are high school staff saying that they need that's different than elementary and middle? So, being respectful of those needs at our different grade bands. So, each year, it won't look the exact same. So, it's continuing to provide different entry points for staff and work with our building principals. Again, it's not a matter of if, it's when. And I think due to our numbers, you can see that staff have been receptive. And it's about a comfort level, too. So, the conversations have to continue. How do we make it meaningful for those who have continued to step back? And what are those underlying fears or concerns? And how have we not addressed them yet?
Are we continuing to survey students? I know when blended was a new initiative, we surveyed students about their experiences and had that data.
And we still do. We survey students and staff, and we also survey parents.
Okay, wonderful. And I guess this is a better question for the secondary teachers, but do you have students who are talking about wanting more of this in other classrooms? Do you have, do you get a sense from students that this is something that they're wanting their other teachers to do?
Do you want to answer that?
Sure. I think the bottom line is that, the short answer is yes and no. You know, there's kids that really, really enjoy it, and then there's kids that really enjoy the quote-unquote "traditional" classroom. And I think that having a mixture of both and putting the blended learning environment out there and having the use of technology and those things for a variety of different uses, I think is definitely something that the kids are wanting. You know, I can't speak for all kids and all students and/or all teachers, but I have a sense through the kids that I've had want the ability to have something to use as a tool in the classroom. Maybe it might look a lot different. And that's probably one of the coolest things I think about blending is how I do it, how they do it is totally different. How a science teacher does it versus an English teacher versus me is totally different also. And I think that's what the kids really like, along with all those different styles and opportunities.
Thanks.
I think for me, I survey my kids twice a year. And overwhelmingly, I have students that want to do more with the blending, more of the projects. I actually had kids this year that were like, "Why don't we do regular quizzes?" And so, I gave them like some comprehension quizzes as options, and they're like, "I don't want to ever do this again." So, it's like they had forgotten. They lost their brain for a second. And then they're like, "Never mind, Catterson. Bring back the Wiki." I got to tell you, I had 19 parents calling the school the first day of school, asking if their kids could get into my classes. My classes run about 10 students more than the other classes that are English and Social Studies because there's such a demand, not just from the parents but from the students. And I have students that come in to my English class that have a traditional Social Studies class, and they're like, "Man, I wish I had you for Social Studies." I've got kids that come to my Social Studies class that are, that don't have me for English, and they're like, "Man, I wish we were doing that with the book." I think that the more that this rolls up, the more you're going to see, I don't think we can keep up. I mean, can, do you, I'm assuming that this is what you're seeing as well. I mean, my son is going to Pinkeye right now, and I was so excited when I found out that both fourth-grade teachers were teaching blended. So, that way, I had a guarantee that he was in a blended class. And I know I'm not the only parent who feels that way. And, you know, and there are just kids that I wish I had that could have the opportunities to learn in the ways that they do here. And I agree, there are some kids that just don't do well with blended, but that's one of those things where it's like you just create a path that says, "Okay, here's like your reading quiz, and you can write this five-paragraph essay instead of, you know, making a movie." You know, my kids are doing a propaganda to show all of the different perspectives of the Mexican-American War, which is something that would take two days of notes. But instead, they're going to research and figure out how Native Americans living in Mexico at the time would have lost their rights and how people who weren't originally slaves are now part of a slave state, you know? And so, it's a very interesting thing. And I can't do that if that bill passed, but I also, my entire curriculum would have been out the window if that bill passed.
We got to email our representatives about this stuff.
But I have to tell you, I also can't do that without having the technology for them to be able to research it. And the other thing is nowadays, we're trying to teach our kids off of primary source documents. There are no primary source documents, virtually no primary source documents in any of the textbooks. You have to go online, and they can see them in the original writing. And so, they can't learn how to interpret that unless they have access to the technology. There's just no way.
Yeah, I really like that answer, that idea that blended learning isn't like a one-size-fits-all. It's a bunch of sizes. And so, if that size doesn't fit you, you have other paths and you have opportunities to personalize that learning for individual students. And so, what doesn't work for one kid, you reimagine it, and then it will as you go. So, yeah, I appreciate that so much. That's helpful. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thanks for taking your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next, we have our Learning Forward Future Ready Initiative. And for that, we invite Jerry Kimball, Jennifer Fazenden, and Joe Smizer up. Did I get those right? I'm sorry.
Well, we only had three names on the agenda, but as you can see, it takes a village. Because we're here to talk about technology, but I think that you could tell from the last presentation, it really isn't about the technology. It's about so much more than that. It's the style of learning that we're using. It's the relationships. It's really much more than that. So, we are going to start off. Kyle Hayden is going to kind of get us started as Joe gets.
Kyle Hayden, Assistant Superintendent, Business and Operations. Probably more often than you realize, I get to work on some cool stuff. And I just don't get to talk about it. So, I get to work with the cool kids tonight, actually. So, I want to talk to you about this initiative. Can we go there?
Yeah, we need to go to.
When it comes to working the technology, though, they're going to have to navigate this for me.
There we go.
So, we're going to talk about Learning Forward Future Ready. Our superintendent's team, as we were preparing for this board presentation and the recommendation before you tonight, we were going through a vision-setting exercise, actually, with Patrick Kelly. And the intent was to kind of develop a strong brand and identity for the initiative we want to talk about tonight. To accomplish this, we really needed to focus on a couple of different things. One was identifying the challenge and then identifying the solution. And quickly, we realized that this was more than, I'm going to try to, we're all going to try to minimalize the use of this term tonight. It's more than one-to-one, and it's more than just a device. So, our challenge, what problem are we trying to solve? We, as educational leaders, need to commit to ensuring that every child is future-ready. This is about preparing our students with 21st-century skills and strategies so they can compete globally. It's about ensuring that teachers receive professional development and support they need to positively interact with students. It's about schools being creative and resourceful and engaging students through meaningful and relevant learning. We have a moral imperative to leverage the use of technologies to close the digital divide, provide equitable access to all kids and families, and level the playing field. We are fortunate to be living in a very exciting time where technology advancements are widely impacting our schools. We have the opportunity to provide digital leadership and develop innovative, technology-rich teaching and learning environments. This will require all of us, as adults, to think differently with a willingness to take some risks. So, our solution, how can we accomplish this? We're going to talk about that tonight. It's the right of every child to have equitable access to technology and the educational resources both inside and outside of the classroom. Let me use the term again. A one-to-one initiative does tackle this issue. Administration and teachers have been strategically planning for how the district would go about making something like this happen within the school year, by the next school year. We believe our school district is poised to create a learning culture that provides every student access to the tools necessary to, for their foster their essential skillsets, support their creativity, and inspire students to learn and achieve even more than we thought possible. That's my small portion.
Thank you, Kyle. So, of course, tonight, we want to start off with the board goals. And you asked us to investigate what a one-to-one would look like. And you can relax a little bit for tonight. We just have one recommendation for middle school. We're going to slow down a little bit for the high school, and we'll talk to you about that in a few minutes as well. But also, getting access for our students. And that is proving to be a very tough task, but I will tell you how we're moving forward on that. And Angelique is going to hit on a board goal as well.
You can see in that top-left corner, we also included the board goal, as you saw in the previous report, about expanding our blended learning and our personalized environment. So, the two are very closely connected. We've learned so much in the past three and a half years, how to personalize learning, what it takes to be effective, and what our students need. So, it's a natural connection to Learning Forward and Future Ready.
As far as getting students connected, if you remember in December, we talked to you about the KJITs, the hotspots. Those have been a hot item. We still have waiting lists. It's going very well. We don't have enough. We could have more. And then the other thing that we did was open the schools in the evenings. That has not been as well-received as we hoped it would be. People aren't coming as much as we would like to see. But the KJITs are something that have really worked well. And of course, you remember our three ladies that spoke to you. And they told you what a difference it made to have technology in their hands and access to technology. So, I just wanted to remind you of that. So, the next step in our journey, Dr. Nedved and I went out to all four middle schools and the two high schools, and we spoke with student-focused groups. We asked them how they use technology, what did they think they might do in their career? How might they use technology in their career? And we just talked about it very broadly. It was a great learning experience for us, and we enjoyed visiting with all of the students. Our next step was to visit with the middle school and high school principals. And what we asked them was, "If you had the capacity to give every student a device that they could take home, what supports would you need at this time? How would the school building own this as well?" Because the research is quite clear that the leadership in the building makes a huge difference on how technology is received and how it's used within that school building. What supports could you build in with what we already have, using some of the PLC time? How could we make this happen in each of your buildings? The next thing we did was talk to the District Technology Committee. Our first meeting, we talked about what it would look like if every student had a device. And then, we talked about different devices. And our tech committee felt like they have a good sense of what a laptop does. So, for our second meeting, we wanted to know, "How would you use an iPad as a learning tool?" And so, that was the focus of that second meeting. We also spoke with district officials in Shawnee Mission, Olathe, and Kansas City, and also school leaders across the country via conference calls and social media. From that, we learned that there are some very important components if we are going to put a device in each child's hand. We need a vision. We need to talk about the environmental design, learning support, communication, assessment. And the other one is financial. And Kyle will talk about that in a few minutes. So, we didn't include that in this presentation. So, Angelique will talk about vision.
So, talking about our vision, as you notice, we're not calling this a one-to-one, but it really is about how instruction becomes more effective and how we personalize learning for our students. So, Learning Forward, we're talking about all learners in our district, not just our students, but our adults and our staff. And then, how do we prepare for future readiness? So, it's really talking about setting that vision with a Learning Forward Future Ready team. And you can think about this very similarly to our equity work. We have a district equity leadership team comprised of individuals from across multiple divisions, as well as building representation. So, we would have a Learning Forward Future Ready team at the district level. But then, our E-Team concept in each of our buildings that personalizes our equity work to the building, we would have a building-level Learning Forward Future Ready team.
And next, Jennifer Fessiden, Supervisor of Technology. We'll visit with you about environmental design.
Hello. So, as far as the flexible spaces and learning pockets, we've all been witness to the transformations of our buildings through the bond construction projects. The shift to personalized learning is supported in the new styles of furniture and flexible learning pockets that we've created. As for our network and wireless infrastructure, your Department of Technology Services continues to research and plan for the most reliable experience possible. Wireless Training Solution, or WITS, will be out in our buildings in March to conduct the wireless site survey. And our network analysts continue to evaluate how to create a more robust network. However, there are a couple of things to keep in mind as we move forward. When looking at student devices, shared devices will always be more taxing on the wireless infrastructure as opposed to a one-to-one environment. One reason for this is the constant logging on and off of multiple devices by multiple students throughout the day. Therefore, only small areas of improvement will be experienced after the site survey and the improvements have been made. Until our district decides to take the next step towards a one-to-one environment. In addition, the management of shared devices is substantially more technically complex and lends to increased issues in deployment and support of those devices. If you had asked anyone in the technology department today, they would say they're not only ready, but they would be excited to move to a one-to-one environment. Thank you.
So, the next piece in our puzzle, our success plan, is communication. Making sure that staff, students, parents, business partners, and community have communication about what their role is, and we have communication as to how we can support them. We've thought of different ways that, for instance, parents, we thought of a parent camp where parents could come and learn about not only the device, how do I keep my students safe online, digital citizenship, and all of those little things that would really be beneficial to a parent who maybe had not had devices in the home before. So, having some of those opportunities for us to work with parents, business partners, to let them know what we're doing and what their role would be and how they can support us, and we could support them. We talked also about, when we talk about connectivity, we'd like to get out in the community and find places that would allow students to come in and use Wi-Fi. Maybe we'd have a sticker on the window that says that they are a proud supporter and would let our students come in. We want to make sure we can find safe places for students to be able to access Wi-Fi after school hours.
We cannot underestimate the need for learning support for our staff as they increase not only their comfort level, but their skills in providing a more personalized environment for our students. So, moving forward, Learning Forward Future Ready, we need to be modeling, and you've seen a lot of that this year with our professional development. How do we personalize that learning for our staff? We can't expect one thing to occur in the classroom and then provide support in an entirely different format. So, personalized professional development can look like learning coaches partnering with teachers in classrooms, the use of our teachers on special assignment, the TOSSAs, ed camps. That's much like the professional development days where teachers come together and share what they're learning in the classroom. Teachers want to hear from teachers. The PLN, Professional Learning Network. How are we pulling in supports from outside of our district and learning from schools across the nation? As well as job-embedded partnership. Who can I have standing next to me in the classroom as we grapple with personalizing the learning for our students in that environment? So, our success indicators can come in many forms. can come in many forms. And we've learned this through our Blended Learning Initiative. Not only are we collecting anecdotal data from our staff, our students, and our parents, but we look at the hard achievement data. So student achievement data will be one success indicator, our Danielson Tool. In our four domains, when you move over to the distinguished category, you'll see the use of Student Choice, Student Voice, Student Path, Student Place in that category. So that can be part of conversations as that Danielson Tool is used for supervision and evaluation. So our survey results coming back, meaningful data, as well as our Continued KU Action Research that we are currently involved in. And we receive quite a bit of support from them, from our researchers.
So as we look at those success indicators, we do have a recommendation for you tonight. And I'm going to let Dr. Bessalo lead us into that recognition.
Good evening. It's a really exciting opportunity even to come here tonight. Initially, this video was made in response to the superintendent's proposal as far as what could you do? What device would it be? How would you get your arms around it? And the exciting piece for me as a school leader is to see how much learning has transformed at South Middle School and really, all four of our middle schools by, through the Blended Learning and the iPad Initiative environment. So rather than it be just my voice when creating this video, I thought, "How cool would it be to really try to encompass some of the data that supports our teachers' work, as well as our students? And in responding to this, how better to ask or answer a 21st-century question than with a 21st-century response?" So with that, Jerry?
What I want, you've got, and it might be hard to handle, like a flame that burns a candle. The candle feeds the flame. Yeah, yeah, what I've got will start all the thoughts and dreams that scatter. Then you pull it all together, and I can't explain. Oh, yeah, well, you. You make my dreams come true. Well, you. Oh, yeah, you make my dreams come true. All or not, when that dream's become a screamer, when they're messing with the dreamer, I can laugh it in the face. Twist and shout my way out and wrap yourself around me, 'cause I hate the way you found me. It'll never be the same. Oh, yeah, well, 'cause you. You make my dreams come true. Well, you. You make my dreams come true. Listen to this. I'm down on my daydream. Oh, that sleepwalk should be over by now, I know. But you. You make my dreams come true. Oh, yeah. I've been waiting for, waiting for you, girl. Oh, yeah, you make my dreams come true. You, me, you, me. Waiting for, waiting for you, girl. Oh, man, you make my dreams come true. I've been waiting for, waiting for, waiting for, waiting for, waiting for, waiting for.
So a couple of things about the middle schools. They have been involved in blended learning for three years. And they've had an iPad initiative for the last two years. So we have a lot of the teachers in the building already working with technology. So we feel like they're ready to move to the next level. And then, I think the next question becomes, "Why are you looking at iPads?" And as we started conversations with different people, they would always ask, "What are your goals?" Because that is so much more important than the device. "What are the learning goals? Where do you want to head?" And as we would explain those goals, people said, "You need to think about the iPad." Well, I think we're so used to laptops that we said, "We have to hear more about that." So we're going to share just a little bit more with you about how the iPad can really revolutionize the way that we are teaching. Going to start off with a video. This is not an educational video. It's called "The App Effect." So I want you to think for a minute how apps and mobile devices have changed your life. Oops. That was not good. Here we go.
Eight years ago, when the iPhone was launched, it didn't have an App Store. And there was tremendous desire on the part of developers and customers for Apple to let third-party applications be created. We all had this dream that apps were going to become really important. But it took some time to realize how they would affect everything that we care about. And as that cumulative effect appeared, then we all start to realize, "Oh, my goodness, this is bigger than any of us imagined."
Apps plus handheld devices, I think that's a watershed moment in civilization. I put it up there with the invention of the microscope and the telescope. Here, we live in a time where the most powerful tools ever imagined to investigate and probe our world are in the hand of essentially everyone.
If you think the Industrial Revolution was transformational, the App Store is way bigger. I don't think we've seen anything reach the mass adoption at anything close to this pace. It took, for example, electricity over 100 years to get to its first 50 million users. It took television 13 years, and the App Store got to 50 million users in only 17 months.
The thing the App Store did was give each and every developer a voice. You know, it's a testament that two guys in a room working on an idea can launch an app and instantly have hundreds of millions of people very quickly. The iPhone made photography universally accessible.
I cannot think of a single industry that doesn't need an app. People want data at their fingertips. They want personalized experiences. They want power over their money. And it's not just for banking, it's for every industry. The App Store has fundamentally shifted how we all need to deliver. It's leveling the playing field.
We don't have to own things. We don't have to own our own cars. We don't have to own our own music. We can call it up when we need it. That's a big change, all flowing from the idea of not just convenience, but people building up an infrastructure around that. We're now talking not about hundreds of people getting the benefits of an idea, but millions.
If you had told me when I was a kid that you would be able to write an idea and then film that idea and then distribute it to the world on a device that you could also put in your pocket, I would never have stopped laughing. And I would have thought you were insane. The App Store gives everyone access to incredibly powerful tools. And there's an incredible generation of filmmakers and storytellers to come.
Kids love technology, and they love interacting with the iPad and with apps. That wonder and awe that gets ignited is actually being utilized to help that person learn. Certainly, in education, there's so much potential to take the classroom with you anywhere.
We all know we're in this magic moment. There are so many incredible apps. And they do things for people that change their lives.
Music, for me, it's like everything. It's really special. This amazing feeling that music gives me, I want everyone to have that, even the person cannot hear. So the idea of the app is to introduce music for deaf people. I'm going to put this in your wrist. So if you play, you can feel the vibrations. Did you feel that, Rob?
It's so cool.
Okay. My dream is to bring music to everyone.
It is an amazing time to be a developer. We're still just at the beginning of all this. This moment where the technology of an iPhone and an iPad and the watch enable so many incredible things. There's so much that can still change and evolve due to the power of applications.
So the iPad is a device that can really personalize education as well for each student. Students can have the apps that they need to learn on their device. The thing about the iPad is, when we add apps to a laptop, it is talking to the machine. It's there for the machine. When you put apps on an iPad, it's there for the person that's using it. This is a noneducational example. But I remember, in the early 2000s, I was in San Francisco. It was late at night. I was on a dark street, and I was scared to death. And I thought to myself, "Wouldn't it be wonderful if I could just call a cab to pick me up?" We can do that now. I mean, I think as I watch this, I think how much has changed. And I also think that we have to consider the world that our kids are going to live in, that mobile world. And so, as we make choices on devices, I think we need to keep that in mind as to the kinds of devices that they will need and be proficient on. So Joe and I worked together on a document that he's going to run you through quickly. It just shows some examples of why iPads. We're going to have this available to you. It is loaded with information. If you see a topic and you want to go deeper, there's a link that you can go deeper with. So I'll let Joe go ahead and run you through that.
All right. My name is Joe Smizer. I'm a technology trainer in the Technology Services Department. I'm certified by Apple to teach this. And I can echo what Jen says. We are really excited about what we can do here. And we're really excited to start. We're so excited. We started to make a list of why an iPad's the best choice or why it's a great device. And we got to like 25 or 26 ideas and threw them in this document. I'm going to highlight a few of them for you real fast.
The video we just watched is in that document, so you can access it.
I went out with Ms. Kimball to Free State. And we talked to students about how they use technology, both in the classroom and at home. And we heard from several students express that they would use their phone from home to open textbooks or to work on assignments and to do everything that they could for class. And they would do that until the end of the month, when they ran out of minutes. And so, they would get to the end of the month, and all of a sudden, they didn't have a device that they could use to access what they had to have for class. If we're looking at what device is best for equity in our classrooms, there isn't a better device than the iPad. Using iTunes U, iTunes U is an app that Apple's created, iTunes U will automatically sync resources from the classroom right to that iPad. So teachers can load in videos and written assignments and all sorts of material into their course. And it will automatically sync with that iPad when the student brings it in. So they bring it to school. All those new resources are downloaded onto the iPad. And they can take it home, or they can take it on a field trip, or they can take it on a trip for a sports team. And they can access that anywhere from their iPad, even if they don't have Wi-Fi. And I think it's a really, really powerful tool. We've also been asked, "Well, what happens if the network goes down?" Which sometimes, the network does go down. This same piece gives added resiliency in the classroom because all those resources that you're worried about pulling from the internet are already on the devices that the students would have. So it really helps in equity, and it really helps in the classroom as well. As we keep going through, I also want to highlight a few more. One of the really, really powerful tools in education is iBooks Author. I'm going to show you a video real fast. I know we've seen a lot of videos, but I'm going to show you one more. This video will show the sort of resource that iBooks Author can create. This is made by E.O. Wilson and his team. He's created at least 10 of these different biology iBooks that are out there, and they're all for free.
See the world around you like never before with E.O. Wilson's Life on Earth. An incredible learning experience that makes science an interactive adventure. Discover biology... Discover biology through stunning visuals, intuitive exploration, and 3D animations. Created by world-renowned educators and led by visionary naturalist E.O. Wilson. This seven-book series makes scientific study as captivating as it is unforgettable. E.O. Wilson's Life on Earth. Get it now for free exclusively on iBooks.
All right. So iBooks Author lets you create iBooks which have obviously text and pictures, but you can also embed videos and 3D graphics and review questions at the end so that you can have a really, really interactive product that teachers can create themselves. We have teachers from our iPad Initiative program right now who are already creating books just like this that they can put in their classroom. So instead of being tied to a textbook, they can create their own textbook and sync it out to all their students' devices and they can do it for free. All right. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about iTunes U. We talked a little bit about the local side, the side that lets you sync resources from your course or your class to all your students' devices. There's also a public side of iTunes U. And if you look on the board, there are 800,000 resources on every topic out there. A lot of them can be tied to Common Core. And as we look at it from a personalized learning standpoint, if you have a student who needs extra attention because he's already ahead of the class, you can bring in a lecturer from, say, Harvard Business or MIT Physics or anything like that. And all these resources are again free and just at a click away. Okay. Lastly, I want to talk about a student who showed up at our Technology Committee meeting and he was excited about the iPad. He had come from a school that had a one-to-one program with an iPad and he didn't have that when he got to Lawrence and he wanted to share his opinion about that. Let me slide all the way down to the bottom. Okay. I believe it's Christian. I think it might get cut off there. But this is Christian Tolson from Free State. And he showed up and he actually gave a TED-like talk at the middle school PD Day last week. And he talked about teachers being hung up on the idea that they need to be out in front of their students in terms of technology. And he went on to say that track coaches are not as fast as the athletes they train. They do not have to be. What they do need to do is provide their athletes with the tools they need and the guidance to allow them to attain their best or their personal best. I think that's really true. And as I thought about this, I instantly thought of Bill Self because we're in Lawrence. And Bill Self probably couldn't beat any of his players in one-on-one, but that doesn't mean he's not a great teacher and a great coach. And so that's what we want from our staff, people who are willing to just be great teachers, to be great coaches. I'll make sure that all these links and the sample iBook gets sent out to you later today. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, is the high school recommendation. We believe that the high school needs to slow down a bit and think about how they want to move forward in a one-to-one environment. We would like to start with a team in March. What we would do is visit other high schools that have one-to-ones so that they could get a good sense of that, talk teacher to teacher, have some job embedded training, continue with the blended learning expansion, and they would be tasked with developing a roadmap for having a device in every student's hand. So that's where we would like to move with the high school at that point. So our recommendation will be that the board allow the middle school to go one-to-one with iPads and then we would be back next year talking to you about how we would move forward with high school. Questions?
So I have a quick question about teacher training for these devices. So I was just at a meeting at LHS with my son and one of his teachers and found it a pretty interesting conversation where the teacher really seemed shocked by the idea that you could make a fillable PDF. So you have teachers who really are far behind in technology and now you're saying, let's put iPads in there and these teachers are going to create iBooks and it's going to be this. They're going to be just pushing information out to these iPads. And so I'm just curious, what is the plan? If you could be a little more specific about what the plan is for training these teachers and keeping them up to date.
Do you want to take that, Angelique, or do you want me to? I can... Okay. So what we would like to do is have a team that would come in and they would work side by side with a group of teachers. That team would work in the classroom in job embedded environment and then the principals in each school would be instrumental in finding time where this team can move it forward and come to other classrooms and help people to move forward. So that would be one thing. We'd also train the learning coaches. We would have some training for them as to how you would move forward and work side by side. We've also talked about having a student tech, kind of a genius bar at the school. There is an actual, there are several curriculums that we could use and utilize so that students in the building could help teachers. If a teacher said, I was thinking about using the app, I wanted a whiteboard app, the students could research that, make a little training video and help them to get started in that. But I think the time has come where we all need to get in the water and get started. Yeah, Rick?
So I have a couple of questions. You know, I certainly support the one-to-one. I was kind of hoping for more of a presentation of a side-by-side, what's the advantages and disadvantages of the Apple or the laptop versus the iPad? And I think that, you know, I use both. And when I actually have to do serious work, I do, I use the laptop, not the Apple. And this is certainly a personal anecdote, but my daughter has both. And when she has to create a school project, she goes with the laptop. So I guess my concern is that, and I know it sort of sounds weird because the iPad has so much flexibility, but I think it's kind of a one-size-fits-all recommendation. And I just wonder if we couldn't get more information about, you know, what are the advantages and disadvantages of each device? And are there some kids who are actually going to work better with a laptop rather than with the iPad?
Okay. So we have thought about that in great detail. First of all, I'm going to liken the iPad to standard-issue boots in the Army. They're the boots that you work with every day that do most tasks. But if you need to get in the ocean and swim, we're going to issue you the tool that you need to do that. If you need to climb a mountain, we will issue you some different ones. We understand that classrooms have different tasks that they need to do and may need different devices. We also understand that some students will need a keyboard. And we also know that the research shows that schools buy keyboards and about 10% of the students use them in most cases and a lot of them end up in a closet after they purchase them. Kids just get used to typing on the iPad. Actually, I didn't know this until recently. The laptop is now called the legacy device. So we're really moving forward in this mobile world. I think actually, when you said the iPad is one-size-fits-all, it is the device where we can really make it personal for what it is that you need.
But for kids who need the keyboard, for example,
Yes.
and I teach a class of 200, 225 people and they all use laptops when they're taking notes. So I think that, you know, I love the analogy of the Army boots versus the swimming, but how does that work in practical terms when a kid really would profit more from a laptop with a keyboard? And yeah, only 10%, but that's, you know, 10% of kids who I don't want to leave behind. So if we're giving everybody an iPad, then how do we address those kids who need something different in a very practical sense?
And I think that we have to remember, we're not going to pull everything out of the school that's there now. So there will be some laptops that are there in the school that they could use for those assignments and check out. And I don't want to put Dr. Besslo on the spot, but she has been working in this environment with iPads and kids. And I didn't know if you could speak to that just quickly?
It's something that I know Matt Brungart and I have talked about a little bit too. And we're already seeing a divide between what our middle schools are used to doing and what our high school students are used to. And we will still have to answer to some students who prefer a keyboard. We know that that's a realistic issue that at least for now we'll navigate. But the interesting part is what I am seeing as a principal and talking with our teachers, if we're really wanting to transform the learning, iPads are the way to go. Versus laptops are a fantastic tool, but they're primarily used right now for word composition and some very basic software pieces. So the exciting journey for us is what students can accomplish at the middle school level with iPads has just been insurmountable compared to what we're doing with laptops.
For the high school team, we will also have that team look at all of these things. The team that we're gathering together so that they can test drive it, see how it works and get a good sense of what it can do and what it cannot do. And Rick, the reason we didn't focus on laptops, I think, is because we have had laptops for many years. I am and I actually created everything on, and I'll tell you the reason why. I created everything on the iPad. We made sure that we did that as we worked on all of the presentations. But the only thing was we had a little buffering problem. It would show, but there was going to be a lap, so we didn't want to waste your time. That's why we did that. Shannon?
I had three questions. I was surprised when you were doing the discussion about the network by the comment that one-to-one is more efficient for the network. And that is certainly, you know, something I anticipate getting questions about as we, well, how are you guys going to handle all the additional devices? So is there a short explanation of why that is that I can then share with people who ask me that question?
One-to-one allows each, each student will have, they'll walk into the school, have their device, they're logged on to the network. And we don't have multiple logging on, logging off students on multiple devices all over the course of the day.
So are those, are those log-on, log-off events more, do they use more bandwidth?
It's taxing on the actual wireless access point.
Okay.
And...
So constant, so having a constant connection is
Is better.
is more efficient?
And students don't log off correctly? So then the next student on is having a hard time getting on, so we're wasting time?
School, the time in the classroom, we're getting, a lot of our HelpDust calls are for, I can't get logged on, I can't get, you know. So it's just more efficient on several different levels.
Okay. The next question relates a little bit to that, the discussion of access outside of school, after-school hours. I know we have responsibilities placed on us in terms of our filtering. What do our kids have access to through our network? If we are providing devices and then there are places that they go with those devices, are there any issues that we haven't been able to solve in terms of our obligations and the statutes for internet safety?
Right. And there's different ways that we can go with that. Some districts have everything filtered right back through the school to make sure that it comes back through our filters. And other districts try to educate parents on, you know, to be a parent and watch what your kids are doing and I know and that's...
I'm sort of picturing the circumstance of, okay, the Starbucks across the street from Free State High School says, okay, we're going to welcome students to come here and work on their laptops, but, or I mean their iPads, but then...
The filter's not there, yes.
And the parent is not there, right?
Right, yes.
So do, maybe this is a more in-depth discussion than what we really need to have tonight, but I guess I would be curious to know a little more about that.
Okay.
And then the third, the third question I had was about, if we're going to not implement at the high school level right away, how are we going to get at the need for devices? That was so well described by the students who came and presented to us a few meetings ago in terms of, are we going to have it in the budget to increase the number of checkout devices and hotspots for next year?
And that is in the budget. We would be able to do that. We could increase that number. And we're also promoting more blended learning environments, but we could certainly increase the number of checkout devices in the libraries as well.
Shannon, I want to respond to that as well because I know the board has been appropriately lobbied and informed by high school teachers. You can't have it all, you know. So if we want to wait and we want to think more clearly about this to make sure that either the iPad is or not, I want to be really clear what Jerry said. The high school group is going to look at iPad and laptop. So it's not just, they're not just investigating iPad. They're investigating laptop and iPad, but you can't have it all. So we certainly recognize, I was in Jerry's office this afternoon. And so there are disadvantages to waiting, but the, because if we didn't wait and moved quickly, we could put those in teachers' hands and in kids' hands. So we won't solve that, Shannon. I think you need to know that, that it'll still be patchwork for one more year and then the group hopefully will give us a recommendation. At that time, the board will have to make a decision. Now, we are committed to providing more devices for checkout, but in terms of us being able to have a device for every kid that wants to check out a laptop, it just ain't going to happen, gang. It just, it just isn't. We just don't have the capabilities to do that. And plus, you'd have to be a little bit careful. Let's say we do go iPad and I don't, I won't be here, so you may decide to go iPad. So we need to be cautious so that we don't invest in, it's very expensive. And so we need to be cautious. So we won't solve everything at the high schools next year, but hopefully if we take a breath, take a year, we'll come closer to getting it right. And so, yeah, kids for a year might not have all the access they need.
But then we've also addressed the digital curriculum issue by having more textbook copies available for students.
And those are available now. That, well, I shouldn't say because I don't know that there aren't any issues related to that, but we have not heard those issues in a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Jill?
I wanted to echo Jessica's concern too. I've kind of heard the same thing on the middle school level. And I do understand, I noted one of the points you made in how to roll this out correctly is to meet the teachers where they're at. I think it's, there's a pretty wide spectrum. I know there's some early adopters, but there's some real concerns out there that this just really changes everything. And to that note too, I was wondering if there is any actual, do we have data that this is actually, you know, helping us meet our goals as far as, I know someone spoke to test scores earlier increasing. And then just one more question. In regards to textbooks, I also heard a lot of feedback that the digital textbooks were not desirable by kids because there was no, I guess, sort of glossary or they're not searchable. Now, I know you're talking about teachers making their own content, but...
Or putting content in a book. They wouldn't have to write the whole book.
Right, right. But they were talking about the digital, I guess, digital textbooks, is that incorrect? That they have available to the students now?
Right.
And they're not, the students don't love them because they can't, you know, there's that one item they're looking for, literally you have to skim and skim and skim.
Right.
Which seems like it would be counterintuitive when you're talking about iPads that are so searchable.
So we were there with students having these conversations and we heard much of that. And what we are experiencing still is a learning curve by our staff to understand all of the digital tools that come within a digital textbook. So yes, they're searchable. Yes, they have indexes. Yes, you can put in a page number and go directly to that page number. So we still have a lot to learn and a lot to support our staff with as far as how to maximize those tools. Marcel?
So for the other schools that you were looking at, the other high schools, were they, any of them currently one-to-one with iPads?
Yes, and we would like to go out and visit some of those schools to see what it looks like there. And yes, there are three that I have on my list that we can go and visit and it's one-to-one iPads, high school.
Okay. So have you gotten any preliminary feedback from them? Okay, so have you gotten any preliminary feedback from them, just in terms of the issues? I mean, because I'm sure they've, they've come, they're addressing, they have to address the same issues that we're discussing here.
Sure, and that's what we want to talk to them about, because we also want to look at laptops as well, so that we can get a good picture of both sides, so that we make an informed decision. So we will talk to them about some of the hurdles that they have, and the road bumps that they've hit, so that maybe we don't have to hit those.
We, we really do feel comfortable with the recommendation at the middle level, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that laptops would be bad for middle school kids, but we really do see the iPad as the right device for the middle school kid. And, and we, and we, and you'll hear us, we will make the recommendation next meeting, we feel strongly about that. We really think the iPad is the right device for the middle school kid. And we will still have laptops in the schools, and certainly there will be times when kids will, may need and will need to do that. We're just uncertain about the high school application, and that's why we backed off.
So can I say one more thing? Is that okay?
Go ahead, sure.
First of all, I appreciate that you backed off the high school for this recommendation right now. I, I do kind of feel like I'm even still on the fence about the middle schools, because I, I don't feel this presentation really, to sort of echo what Rick said, it didn't really give me a good sense of why it's better. It was, it felt a little more like a commercial. So I guess what I would say is going forward, when you come back with a year from now, six months from now, whatever it is, with the recommendation for the high school level, that it is a little bit more data-driven than this, this proposal was. Just so that we can all look at the information and really understand where you're getting it. You know, I still am unclear. You have these sort of focus groups, but we didn't really get any information about what those focus groups said, what their concerns were, how you addressed them to get to this decision. So for me, going forward, I mean, I'm, you know, I can get on board with the middle school, but definitely since we've heard from high school teachers, and there does seem to be some concerns, I would want to have a lot more information than we have on this one.
We felt that a lot of people are not familiar with the educational capacity of the iPad. That's why we put a lot of that in there. We felt that more people are familiar with a laptop and what it does, so we didn't address that. That was the reason that we did that. Students that we talked to, we just talked to them at a high level, how do they use the technology? How do they like to learn? What, what technology are they using? And how do they think they'll use technology in the future? So those were the questions that we asked them and visited with them about.
I just wanted to sort of ask the flip side of what Marcel asked, and are there schools out there that have one-to-one initiatives with laptops?
Yes.
And, okay, so it would be, I think, really informative to have, you know, data on, you know, what are the, what do they see as the advantages and disadvantages of both of those, so that we can make.
That's what the group would be tasked with, yes.
So Rick, for example, we know that Shiny Mission has moved with, started iPads, made some movement back to laptops. We've got them, them, we've got that school district that we can visit with. Why? Lansing High School, I think I've told you that story before, no lockers, and all one-to-one digital curriculum to iPads. So, and they're close. I mean, they're just right here, and they're a couple of years ahead of us in that regard. So those are two examples that would be excellent resources for us next year. There are, there are a number of schools that have one-to-one initiatives, but quite honestly, they haven't entered it as cautiously as we had. There've been schools that have one-to-one initiatives for 10 years, and really, teachers haven't teach, taught any differently. They continue to teach basically the same way, which is why we are really trying to brand this as not about the technology. It's about having teachers teach differently, and that's why some of the feedback, some concern on teachers' part is that, okay, I might be willing to do that, I don't know how to do that, so who's going to help me, who's going to help me do that? And that certainly is our responsibility to help them do that.
Are there, are there schools that, that they have both? Or is it just you, you either have a laptop or you have an iPad?
I heard of a school that does have both devices. They're a, not one-to-one, but two-to-one school, which would be hard to afford that, but.
Oh, there are two, two devices per kid?
Two devices per student, yeah.
So the finance part of this, and we, this was not part of our discussion, Kyle will talk about that, but at some point, you do have to talk about the cost. And the laptops are more expensive, and so that really didn't, didn't enter into our discussion as related to middle school as we really think that's the right device for middle school kids.
But, but that's not necessarily true, depending on the laptop device that you get. The, in fact, you can get a number of them that are significantly cheaper than the iPad. So I think we should just be clear on, on the numbers here.
Yep.
I have a question about, so rolling out the iPads, if this goes forward for next year, would we anticipate that like the student handbooks and like the agenda would be built in as part of that device? I mean, I would hope so, right? We wouldn't have them have a paper agenda as well. So that would start getting them used to having their calendar icon as being what they put their.
Absolutely. I heard the middle school principals saying, wouldn't that be great if we could give up the agenda book and move in this direction so that kids learn to get organized on a mobile device?
That's exciting to me. I do think that that, learning those skills at a younger age helps with organization and helps, I mean, I think that that's the future, and that's the direction that a lot of that is going. Shannon?
One question about that. So, so we haven't really talked at all about elementary schools, and I don't anticipate we would be talking about one-to-one at elementary anytime soon. But are there, you know, are there things that we would consider needing to do with those late elementary school grades to get them ready to move on to?
We have so many.
The middle school, or do we feel like just being in blended classroom is going to be the preparation they need to, to be kind of ready with some skill coming in? Or, or do we anticipate that we're just going to have to spend a lot of time at the middle school level, teaching those skills at the beginning of the year when they, when they hit sixth grade?
No, students have iPads and they have laptops in the blended learning classrooms, and so they are familiar with them before they would get to middle school?
I guess I'm just thinking, because I know not all of our fifth grade classes are blended, for example. So I've got, I've got a fifth grader who's in a blended classroom this year, but not all of our kids are. Be heading sixth grade next year with devices that maybe they, maybe they've been in a blended classroom, maybe they haven't at all, actually, because of the way this is rolled out, so.
Shannon, on that point, I think I would anticipate kids figuring it out. I mean, my three-year-old can pull out my iPhone, log in, go to the music, and play her My Little Pony soundtrack without even, and I didn't teach her, she just figured it out. You know what I mean? And so I really do think it's a matter of just getting the devices to the kids, and then they're going to run with them, and we're not going to have to worry. You know, and, and help, having the kids help the teachers, like, this is how you do a PDF and make it easy, you know?
Right.
So I, I really do think that a lot of that is just a matter of letting it naturally occur, because this is the direction we're moving.
So the plan is to bring a, and it will be a recommendation to go one-to-one at middle school level next year with iPads to the next meeting, which is going to be on the 21st of March, hopefully. Everybody said that would be okay. So you, you need to fire us your questions, you need to ask those, ask those questions. And, and remember, middle school is what we're talking about. And we can have an extended discussion again on the 21st. This is a big decision, not only from a money standpoint, but from a teaching and learning philosophical standpoint. This is a big decision, so you need to take your time, ask the right question, and we'll bring it back next meeting.
Any other questions tonight? Yeah, thank you for your time. Okay, and we do have public comment on this agenda item, so I want to invite Jeff Polinsky up for three minutes of public comment. Janice is our timekeeper, and certainly if you have further comments after that, we can, you can call us or email, that kind of thing. Thank you.
All right. My name's Jeff Polinsky. I'm an English teacher and the debate forensics teacher and coach at Lawrence High School. I had emailed several of you with some of the concerns that high school teachers had shared with me, and some very specific concerns that I had in my classroom. And I, I'm here tonight because I want to describe something really cool that happened at the end of last week. And that is Jerry Kimball gave me an opportunity to meet with her and hear those concerns, and we could talk through some of those concerns and challenges, and we had, I think, a very productive discussion. And, and I think the, you're seeing the end result of some of that here tonight. And so I certainly applaud, and, and I want to, I want to say thanks to Jerry for, for taking the time to do that. As you move forward in this, I'm, I'm an absolute supporter of this notion of one-to-one. As to which device, I'm still up in the air. I'm not sold on the iPad, but I'm willing to believe that it can do things now that it couldn't do three years ago, when the district offered me an iPad to play with to see if it would be helpful in my classroom, and I determined that it wasn't. I'm glad to hear that we're going to talk to other school districts. You mentioned Shiny Mission in Lansing specifically, the Olathe Public Schools went through this process as well, and the teachers in the Olathe High Schools decided that iPads were not particularly useful there, but their middle schools found them very useful, and so that's where those iPads will find their home. And Olathe anticipates rolling out one-to-one laptops next year. Lansing has started with the iPads. As a debate coach, I get to spend a lot of hours in high school cafeterias on the weekends, talking to coaches from other school districts. And technology is a pretty frequent subject of discussion, as we're all trying to learn what the other folks are doing and why they're winning and we're not, and, and so forth and so on. I can tell you, the addition of technology not only changes the classroom for the subject that I teach, but it changes the effectiveness of the learning of the students, both the skills and of, and of content material. I would leave you with just a couple of final thoughts. One of the things that we stress in blended learning is encouraging students to find their own path to learn, provided that, that they're headed towards the destination that we need them to be headed towards. When we go through the process of training teachers, I would hope you'd ask the same questions. And, and I would encourage all the board members and all the administrators to get out of this building and go one-on-one and chat with some teachers, go knock on their doors. And don't go in a big group, because when a big group from this building shows up outside a teacher's classroom, it's almost always bad.
Or if there's a check.
Or there's a big check. But the number, no, that's fine Vanessa, but the number of checks that show up versus the number of.
I get that, okay.
I'll stand by my original statement. I encourage you to go knock on teachers' doors and talk to them one-to-one. Ask them these questions. And even if they're, and probably better if they're teachers you don't know, because you're more likely to get some, some authentic response. Ask them how they want to learn, and ask them if these are useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we will move on to our old business for this evening, which is the approval of the capital improvement plan. And Kyle Hayden, you're welcome back.
I really hope this doesn't take us long, so everybody's probably a little tired here. Yeah, it's all on me, right? Okay, Kyle Hayden, Assistant Superintendent Business and Operations, here to talk again about the capital improvement plan at the February 8th meeting. I brought the plan to you. Kathy Johnson and myself talked about the capital outlay budget and where we were with that, and how we would fund this plan for next year. There haven't been a lot of changes to this. I'll point out just a couple of different things, but we moved a couple items here and there, but really the bottom line is about the same for the 2016 fiscal year. As you go down here, just a, a couple of different things to, to point out. First of all, in the district-wide leases, so I pointed out last time that we had a placeholder here for to-be-determined lease for technology devices, which is obviously what we just got done talking about. And we've put in there a figure of $850,000 that would cover whatever we decide to kind of do. So it, it sufficiently covers an iPad initiative at the middle school, which would be a deployment of around 3,000 devices for students and for teachers. It also could cover additional blended learning rollout of classrooms for those devices, both iPad and laptops. And then it also could cover putting the iPads in the hands of every high school teacher, so that they could get introduced at least to the iPad, and as these groups are going out and about, because they already have a laptop. So these groups are going out and about why they can explore themselves on the device, because not every one of those teachers is a blended learning teacher, especially at the high school level. We don't have a lot of blended learning classrooms at the high school. So their exposure to the iPads has been very minimal, so this would actually help with that too. So that's what that dollar figure would cover. It may not be that amount, I guess, when we come on the 21st for that particular approval item, but it's budgeted for that, not to exceed.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question while you're?
Correct.
Can we go ahead and, and talk about having the iPads put in the hands of the teachers at Lawrence High and Free State? If that's in fact what we, they already have the, the laptops, if we want them to be thoroughly able to investigate that over the course of the next year, that seems pretty logical to me. I don't know how other board members feel about it.
That was our intent, so yes, if you support that, then we'll build that in.
Jessica, you'd make that decision next meeting, but we've got the money budgeted for that.
So that'll be brought up next?
Absolutely, and that is part of our, was part of our plan.
My question is, so the decisions that we make this year about this kind of lease purchase device, how does that affect the decisions that we can make next year when it comes to high school, as far as like capacity for that number? You know what I mean? So that's the lease purchase dollar amount per year, basically, right? But it could be lower if we decide to wait on the high school, is what you're saying?
That's correct. It really depends on what we want to include into this lease. So if you, if you look at the district-wide technology budget also, you can come down here and you can see that there's also $965,000 for other mobile devices for blended learning. So we have another line that would not be included in the lease purchase line, so it's separate from that. Also want to note, if you go back up and you look under our leases, this is the 2014 lease, so we have, this is what purchased our teacher devices. And so we have two more years of payments on that, and then obviously there's not one after that. I mean, we have to think about upgrading or replacing the teacher devices if they're ready to be replaced at that time. But, so that allows for flexibility to enter into maybe a second lease at that point in time. But if we wanted to enter into, you know, if we were going to a high school one-to-one, we'd probably introduce a third lease in next year's budget, to be honest with you. That's what we would do. So we would have another line in there for a 2017 lease for whatever X amount. That would be, you know, a probably, I think we estimated like 3,300 now, more like 3,500 more devices. So it would be equivalent to what we'd be doing this year, at a minimum. So it depends on the device, you know, just what we talked about, whether it's an iPad, whether it's a laptop, what type of laptop that is. So, am I articulating that?
Yeah, yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
I might add, the leasing piece of that is so really attractive right now, I mean, last year, so, and we can do it through Apple or otherwise, but 1%, and we buy them back for a dollar after four years. So I said, leasing right now is just really, really attractive, and it won't maybe always be, but it is, it is right now. Just almost doesn't make sense to, it just almost makes more sense to lease.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to hear it.
Can I point out one more thing?
Oh, sorry, Jill, go ahead.
Can I point out one more thing?
We can still make a motion and have discussion afterwards, but yeah, go ahead, Jill.
Okay, I got, I got one more thing. Because it substantially changed the bottom line. So when you get to the bottom line here, it, we stayed about the same on, on current year, but going out, this number changed dramatically, and I'm going to show you why it changed dramatically. Because another item we've been talking about, if I go back up here to our leases, is the idea of a new facilities and operations facility in a warehouse. If that were to happen and we were to construct that, we have a budget built for that that's nearing $4 million. Well, we're not going to pay cash for that to happen, obviously, so that could be another potential lease, and we figured that out over a 10-year period, that a lease payment of estimated $420,000. Once again, I'm on the high side, I'm trying to budget on the high side so that we don't exceed. exceed that figure, but when we draw out plans, in which we have done, and we've kind of talked about this with Shannon Marcel, especially with the Facility Planning Committee, that's what it would look like. And so what ends up happening is before I had those plugged with a 1.5 million, a 1.5 million, and then another 1.5 million spread out over three years, but it's actually now, this is positioned as a lease purchase is what we would pursue it as. So...
Yeah, Jill.
I just had a question, kind of based on what you said last, last meeting about, once we approve this, it's, how inflexible is it? You mentioned something about the possibility of putting custodian costs into this. Are we approving 2000, the whole, all of it, or are we just approving 2016? And if we do, how flexible is that?
So we're approving the general plan, and then anything over a certain dollar amount, tell me the figure, comes to us generally on the consent agenda for approval, $20,000. So at any point, we could make changes to this and modify this based on needs and change, you know, and how we feel. It's just a matter of having a general roadmap so that we can be deliberate about decisions that are made going forward. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct. So every item on here, that's a specific project or purchase, that's not part of just the general facilities and operations budget or the general technology budget you guys will see in some form. So those decisions can be made all the way along the way. It's completely fluid, and when we're looking at really your approval, it's more about the general plan and then specific projects for 2016.
Because each one of these items will be bid if it's over $20,000, is that right?
Yes.
And then that's subject to bid. So these are best guesses for estimates, and, you know, how they'll come in is all kind of just dependent upon the market.
We also use your feedback at goal setting to develop this list. So that discussion that Jill just talked about, that you brought up last time, that may come up again when we start talking about transportation, all of that, in my opinion, should be a, that's where you provide the administration direction in goal setting, to where you say, look, we do want to pull some dollars out of capital to pay for some of these things or to do transportation, so what do you want to take off the list? That, in my mind, that was, would be how that should operate.
Okay, you can make the motion. We can still discuss if necessary, so go ahead.
Please no. I've moved the Board of Education to approve the list of projects for 2016 as outlined in the capital improvement plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Janice? Oh, I'm sorry, any further discussion? I promise that we, I'd ask. Okay, we're ready.
Yes.
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 And so then we'll find out what the date of the next board meeting is, fairly soon?
I would count on the 21st. I'd run it by board officers, but I would just say, just plan on the 21st.
Okay, so that will be when we meet, or actually, we meet again next Monday for superintendent search stuff, and then again, we'll just see each other all the time.
To know each other.
Yeah, okay. So that is our meeting for the evening.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor. We are adjourned.